I'd like to call this order, call the meeting to order. We have a tobacco statement policy in place. There is no smoking within 100 feet of any school building. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. District clerk, please call roll.
Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Here.
Trustee Goodrich?
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Here.
Trustee Story?
Here.
Trustee Bishop? Thank you.
Okay. Motion to enter an exec session to meet with their attorneys to discuss potential litigations. Can I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second, trustee Mitchell Morrell. Any comment? All in favor? That's, we shall be back in about a half hour.
Motion to exit executive session and return to public session. Can I have a first? Trustee Romano, a second. Trustee Hemingway Lynch, any comment? All in favor? Welcome. Our middle school principal, Mr. Del Donna, will welcome the board. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Here we are toward the end of October and the school year is going really well. We're just about done with the first quarter. We have two weeks until the first quarter is up for the middle school and the high schools. So we're moving right along. We've had a really smooth year. The kids have assimilated great, seventh graders, and happy to say that everything is going well. We had our middle school dance on Friday night. I passed some pictures down to Amanda. She can pass them down, but we had some great time. About eighty kids showed up. You know, really kudos to Ms. Somer, who runs the yearbook and uses that as sort of a fundraiser to keep the yearbook costs down at the end of the year. And also, the kids really have a great time getting together. So we had that on Friday night. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up on November eighth and ninth. We will be offering a virtual a virtual way to attend those conferences during the day on the eighth, so we're excited about that. It gets a lot more parents involved. They don't have to leave work, and they can have a conference with a teacher if they need be. What else is going on in the middle school? We're really concentrating on the transition. We've done a lot of work in the past six weeks. We have a committee formed at the middle school, which includes the middle school cabinet, the guidance department, and a sixth-grade teacher. We bring them together. We go over where we are in the process. We talk about just kind of keeping everybody abreast, and they go back out and talk to the teachers and get questions and then bring it back to the committee. So it's really working well. I also met with Ms. Laffin with the sixth-grade teachers earlier in September. We were able to really start to get down to the nuts and bolts of who's going to be teaching what when they come up to the middle school. A little bit different way we run. We do a nine-period day. We have to start to think about how we want to deliver instruction with the core teachers and the special ed teachers. So I kind of put it out there to them, and we'll meet again with them next week, and we'll get some answers about, so we can start putting together a schedule. I also met with the Bennett PTA, which was a great meeting. We really just kind of gave them an update, like I'm giving you right now, where we are in the process. They were very appreciative. Just want to know how we're doing, where we're going, but really no answers will start, will come solidified until January, February. That's when we'll really start to look and see what the schedule looks like, where people's rooms are going to be, and those types of things. What we did, we were able to go over all the offerings we're going to have for those sixth graders, which is over a dozen clubs, and we are looking at running an intramural program next year. The music program will be assimilated into the seventh and eighth-grade music programs is what we're thinking at this point, which will increase the band in the middle school, allow those younger kids to learn from the older kids. So we're really excited about the music program moving forward. Ms. Dezon is just doing a fantastic job, our new higher band teacher, and of course, our chorus teacher and our orchestra teacher all do a great job. So we're really looking to bolster those at the middle school. And the sixth grade coming in will also help that and be able to get more lessons and get more time on those instruments. We're still exploring options for the sixth grade as far as scheduling goes, but we will be offering four or five different, we call them specials. In the elementary school, they call them specials. Up here, we call them electives, I'm sorry. So we're going to have those moving forward. We're still kind of putting those together, but we're putting a really robust program together so that the kids are going to get a lot more of everything. And by the time they come out of middle school, they'll really have a full education, be prepared for the high school. Also meeting with the furniture wholesaler this month to look at new furniture for the classroom. So that's coming up at the end of November. And, you know, continue to make decisions with all our stakeholders, you know, trying to have as many meetings and get everybody's input and, you know, really have a good, clear plan when we get into the 2024, where we're going to be in next September. So that's really taking a lot of time. Most of my days are spent communicating and thinking about the plans and talking to guidance and talking to teachers and talking to parents, you know, on top of running the school on a day-to-day basis. So it's been a busy year, busy start, and it's been a lot of fun. So it's exciting. And once again, welcome. And if you have any questions?
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Thank you. I just want to say how much I appreciate you taking the time to focus on this transition. It is really important for the district entirely, but also, of course, for this particular cohort of kids and parents. So I really appreciate how much time you're spending on it. I appreciate that you started the conversation with the board last spring and have continuously updated us, and really grateful for your attention to all the details.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Stephanie Laffin will present the three-through-eight assessment summary.
Good evening, everyone. So today, we get to talk a little bit about our three-through-eight New York State assessment scores. The request was for us to do a little deep digging into some academics, and I thought a really great place to start was with our three-through-eight scores from last spring. The beginning just shows participation rates by grade in ELA and in math. And the good news from this chart is our participation rate increased substantially compared to spring of 2022. Obviously, participation rates during the pandemic were very low, and that's if the tests were even given during that particular year. So it's great to see those numbers climbing in that way. Something else to think about is that this particular assessment, the math and ELA assessments in the spring, were based on new standards. And because there's new standards, that means there are new assessments that are written to match the standards. So with ELA and math, we have our next-generation standards. They were implemented in the fall of 2022, and the first assessment was in the spring of 2023. Something that's important to consider is comparing the scores and the rates with prior assessments in math and ELA. It's not advised. We're really dealing with a different design structure and different standards. So they are not we're really kind of starting at the beginning now with this new set. So this will be a benchmark line by which we can compare our own growth. And if you notice, the link there, there is a reference page that gives you lots of information as to the math, ELA, and science assessments, the length, how they're designed. There's also a parent reference guide and sample test results, what parents saw if their students participated, the report and results that they received in the mail earlier this year, earlier this month. Scores, just to familiarize you with what they mean, New York State sets performance level scores rated from one to four, four being the highest score. And students receiving a four, performing at that level, they're excelling in their standards. They're exceeding their grade-level expectations. Level three, the students are performing proficiently in their standards. That is something we also consider a grade-level performance. Level two, students performing partially proficient, so they are somewhat below. They have demonstrated proficiency in some standards, but not in others. And then level one, students performing at that level have demonstrated that they are below proficient in standards. And many of you have seen this on the letters that we send home around assessments, the letter that comes with the copy of the parent guardian report. You know, these assessments are a snapshot of what the student knows and is able to do that day at that time. So when it comes to these, it's important to remember that we triangulate this data with a wide variety of assessments when we think about student ability and proficiency. As you proceed through the next pages, everything is broken down by grade level between math and ELA, both the number of students and the percentage of students. And as you go through for grades three through seven, you will see the kind of variety of performance levels as it shapes and changes. One thing I'd like to highlight is on the grade eight slide, you'll notice the participation rate for math students, it is different. It looks different. And that's because we had nineteen students taking the Algebra I Regents exam. So that chunk of students is removed from the numbers, and that is different than you will notice in other exams. So moving forward to science, also hotlinked there are our New York State P-12 Science Learning Standards, which are new. And they are being implemented in grades K through eight, very soon to be implemented in grades nine through twelve. The science assessments prior to spring of 2023 have occurred in grades four and eight. In preparation for the implementation of our new standards, the spring twenty-three assessments were only given in grade eight because the other grades were already being instructed under the new standards. So in the spring of twenty-four, the science assessments, they're going to be newly revised. They will match the new standards and will be given in grades five and six instead of grades, excuse me, five and eight instead of grades four and eight. These assessments will reference the science investigations that are being done during class in grades three through eight, in addition to other practices, ideas, and concepts. So this is a new component of the assessment moving forward, that there are a series of investigations that students will experience as part of regular class as they move forward. So the next slide shows the performance level in students in Science Eight, spring of 2023. Also highlighted on this slide is the participation, having ninety-one total grade enrollment. Sixty-six students were scheduled to take the assessment because we had twenty-five scheduled to take the Earth Science Regents and Advanced Science that year, and we had eleven of the ninety-one students in the grade refuse that science test. So taking a look at at the scores, something that obviously it's noticeable that we have lots of room for growth. And it's important to kind of get an assessment. Coming out of the pandemic, everyone had very, you know, had concerns about scores, and we see that reflected here. It's not surprising by any means, but it's definitely concerning. And we have a series of steps that we are utilizing to address the gaps that are suggested here. So now, our past superintendent's conference day, as soon as this data was released and we were able to share it within the school district, administrators and teachers, they've been taking a deep dive into the data to see what we can learn about our need for revising curricula and instructional strategies. Staff review the data along with multiple other data points to determine which students need extra academic support, such as AIS services. And our administrators are learning how the Branching Minds data platform can enhance our MTSS process or multi-tiered systems of support. And that will really strengthen our ability to effectively target our student needs. And in relation to this, it's exciting to think about our MTSS coordinator position. That's going to really refine our ability to use data to drive decisions about evidence-based instruction and resources to close the skill gaps that resulted from the pandemic. And the link there, if you go a little bit further into that, that discusses MTSS, the process, and there's also another link at the bottom of that to our Branching Minds platform that we're going to be continuing to utilize.
Thank you. Any questions? Trustee Goodrich?
So in looking at the numbers, especially three through seven, I'm going to ignore eight because it's a little skewed there. Is the microphone on? Yeah, just want to make sure. So could you tell us a little bit about the MTSS and how that's going to try to improve things? I mean, are you going to try to set goals for certain levels to try to improve those numbers? Or could you give us a little bit? Or could you give us a little bit more information, how that might work?
Sure. The MTSS process is really focused on individualized students. So as I mentioned, this is a specific data point. When the MTSS process is where we have our educators in the building, we come together, we have conversations about students, how they're doing, how they're performing. It's not only academic. It can also be social, emotional, behavioral. That's another process of MTSS. But since we're focusing on academics here, the idea is to have discussions with lots of data points, not only our state assessments, but also MAPS data, how they're performing, classroom assessments, things the teacher's noticing. It's a, it's a discussion about students and their success. And now they can drill down and use specific strategies to, for a specific amount of time to see how they are working towards their growth. So when we talk about MTSS, that's, that's a process that is really about every single student represented in this data, but it's individualized. So if you want to think about goals, that's something that, you know, as a, as a building or as a grade level, building principals work with their staff where they may choose to set a building goal, where they, they might choose. Ideally, we would like to see this amount of growth by this time. And sometimes they'll pick specific standards. One other thing that's not available, you can't see, but teachers look at how students are doing on specific standards. So there's lots of ways for them to use data to set goals and standards on growth. So definitely growing is the focus.
Well, thank you.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Thank you, and thanks for sharing this analysis. It's very insightful. I'm just curious then, as we look across the different grade cohorts, how are they working towards these goals? Is it, because it's so individualized, what I heard you saying, would it mean then that it's done sort of like grade by grade versus building by building? I'm curious how you're supporting our teachers to help meet some of these goals for improvement.
Are you talking about MTSS meetings, just to clarify?
Sorry. So what I'm saying is, for example, I mean, with the exception of grade, grade three, right? Just a quick look at this, grade four, five, six, seven, they all have more students who are at level one and two than they do at level three and four, right? So as a, as a head of the curriculum, how do you approach that challenge? Do you work primarily through principals or are you working more individually with teachers, given how sophisticated the MTSS is?
So if we're talking around, around proficiency, student proficiency in a, in a larger sense, we have been utilizing actually quite a bit of our art money and Chrisa money, had to be dedicated to helping students kind of make academic comebacks and support them through the changes in the, as a result of the pandemic. So we have, we have really invested heavily in curricula. We invested in a new math program. We invested in all of our revised units of study with TC. Real focus on phonics instruction at the elementary level. We invested in Orton Gillingham training for our reading teachers and other teachers. We also investigate and invested in Wilson training. So it's really all kinds of professional development and resources for the classroom teacher, but also special ed teachers and our AIS teachers. Tools that they can kind of refine and reuse to think about how can we all drill down and differentiate? So it's not just our AIS teachers or our special ed teachers or our reading teachers. This is about regular ed classroom teachers as well, thinking about how they can refine their practice and support students at that level as well. I could, there are a lot of examples of things we, we have done, but that is kind of a sample, if that answers your question.
It does, yes. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. It's great. The numbers of this were a little shocking, but it's understandable because some of our students have never taken a state test before and we have COVID in there. So now we have the data points of where we're starting at, and now we can only improve now. And that's what we need to do. Okay. Next, the Board of Education hereby adopts the minutes for the October tenth, 2023 meeting. Can I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, a second? Trustee Goodrich? Any comments? Trustee Jerome?
I accept the minutes. Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you. The superintendent will report district news.
Good evening. So my first bit of news is we've been anxiously awaiting a proposal from Holly Brooker from Ulster Bosse's, our public relations supervisor. So she did get us a proposal this week, and we are going to move forward with that proposal. She has graciously agreed to join our communications committee meeting next week to discuss the structure of the proposal and the rollout and the creation of our communications plan. I had hoped to have our new website published, or our new webpage, I'm sorry, published this week, but after discussions with Ms. Brooker and the realization that I am not a webpage designer, she has jumped in and she and her, her staff are going to help us to refine it. So I'm hopeful, she led me to believe, we may be able to review it with the communications committee next week. In terms of an update on work that has been done, I know Principal DeDonna shared some of the work that's been done, but just looking back over the month of October so far, there has been a design and planning meeting at Bennett and at the middle school for the mural that will be designed by our students in both the middle school and Bennett. We did approve the contract for our muralist, Joe Pimentel. We have had our initial Bennett Playground Edition discussion. We held a site meeting with the representative from Parketex. We identified the location for the new play structure. We are now waiting on some preliminary designs. And the goal is to share potentially three different designs of a play structure with the Phoenisha students and get their input, which is similar to what we did when we did the Bennett Playground. Actually, I think when we did all of the playgrounds previously, but we were thinking that's always nice to have the kids have the input and be able to have a voice in picking what their play structure will look like. We also asked for some additional design items to be added to the playground that may be freestanding. We're looking for some items that focus on providing some sensory opportunities and also some accessible opportunities for students. And it's nice because it, the playground, the play structures do kind of abut the pavement. So if there is some mobility issues, then we can have some freestanding items that are accessible. At the last board meeting, we approved the contract for working with Transportation Advisory Services. So we are going to embark on our bid process. So we will be creating the bid for our transportation contract that will begin on July first, 2024, incorporating our new configuration. We identified, as I mentioned last meeting, Mr. Bono as the Bennett principal moving forward and Ms. Fallow as our MTSS coordinator moving forward. Both of those positions are vital and will be integral to our students' success moving into next year. The central administrators and I all met with our PTA leaders on October fifth to kind of share as the PTA summit, all the wonderful things that they are doing, give them an opportunity to be together and share amongst each other and with us, and also for, for them to share concerns and questions with us as we move forward. The Phoenisha PTA was really gracious and is very focused on celebrating their final year in Phoenisha and being involved in the transition. And they were very relieved to hear that we were moving forward and addressing the playground early so that that will definitely be in place. And that they, that input will be, will be solicited from the kids as we move forward. We are also looking at if we can do a community build like we did with our other playgrounds. So that would be a really wonderful way for everybody to come together and have a hand in creating this new play structure. Also, we went from central administration and met with the Phoenisha principal and faculty to discuss their questions and concerns. That was on October tenth. The faculty has a lot of questions, some of which we could answer now, and some we worked, we collab, we committed, sorry, whoa, we committed to working through together as we get further in the process. Some of the concerns were fairly easier to address in terms of, they were concerned if there would be enough room in the Bennett building for all of them. And we kind of covered the, the layout of Phoenisha versus Bennett, the Phoenisha building being a little less than thirty thousand square feet and Bennett being over forty-seven thousand square feet. The projected enrollment in Bennett next year after the transition is about two hundred and twenty students. And currently, there are two hundred and forty-three students in Bennett. So I think that that would be fine. Some of the concerns they brought up, they're just very concerned for all of their colleagues. They wanted to know if the custodial staff would be traveling to Bennett with them. We kind of reiterated that the facilities staff is assigned each year by the facilities director. So that will be based on the needs. I know the facilities director is of course very happy to have less buildings to cover so that we will have full staffing. There were questions about whether monitors and TAs would be traveling. And we reminded them that we will do everything we can to support everyone, but monitors and TAs will be assigned based on the needs of students. I don't anticipate, and we don't anticipate layoffs, but they may not necessarily go. Every year, monitors and TAs are assigned based on student needs. So they may be assigned to Bennett, or they may be assigned based on student needs in a different building. The faculty would like to know their room assignments as soon as possible, and we absolutely understand that. And we want to get that information to them as soon as possible. Some of the assignments will be dependent on which faculty members retire at the end of this school year. The teachers' union contract requires members to inform us of their intent to retire by March first. We would prefer to know that as early as possible, but we can't require earlier notifications. So some of our planning will revolve around that information. Principal DeDonna shared that he had met with the Bennett PTA and with the sixth grade staff. We have also created an elementary transition committee. And Assistant Superintendent Laffin has already scheduled monthly meetings for the committee and extended invitations to all of our bargaining units from each of our elementary buildings, looking for participation. So this is just another layer of collaboration and communication that will be utilized to gather input and provide additional information so that we ensure that our transition is smooth and positive. Okay, that's it for that part of the update. Just informationally, everybody, it's getting to be the, the fall and winter. As we've noticed, the days are getting shorter. So just to let everyone know, our administrative cabinet discussed the success and limitations of holding remote instruction days as an alternative to snow days in inclement weather, and decided as a team that the remote instruction was really not as beneficial on a sporadic basis as it was when remote learning was a consistent practice. So the team as a group decided that we will proceed this year utilizing the traditional snow day practices of closing school for inclement weather. And if we do use more snow days than the seven we have in our calendar, we will be in session during our spring break in order to meet the required days of attendance. An update on EV buses. We had a meeting yesterday with representatives from the EPA, NYSERDA, and we were joined by representatives from Pat Ryan's office and Mark Molinaro's office. The EPA made it clear that they will not approve an extension beyond really about a month. They would like to still see us release purchase orders in the spring despite our explanation that we don't have a location to house the vehicles or the infrastructure at this time. We explained that we would be willing to look for a location, but that would need to be purchased. And we can't do that within their timelines. After our call, though, we continued to stay on the line with the representatives from Pat Ryan's office and Mark Molinaro's offices, and they were very supportive. They were very understanding of our challenges. And Natalie Lincoln from Pat Ryan's office has provided us with some initial information about a grant program that might provide funding for purchasing property and building the infrastructure required. So we're going to continue to look at that and work with her to see if that's a viable option, and then look to apply for future rounds of funding through the EPA. Fall sports, we've had an incredible, incredibly successful fall sports season. A number of our teams have been involved in postseason games and meets. Please continue to check social media for updates. I know we try to post everything as it comes up. There have been games seemingly every day, every other day. So attend any events that you are able to, cheer for our teams, and then offer congratulations to our athletes on another great season. We were notified that our social studies instructional leader in the elementary, Karen Hadley, has been recognized for the work that she and our students have done. The students have really done so much in terms of recycling and in order to raise awareness and make a change in the world. And she has been her dedicated, their dedicated supporter and guide. And they just don't slow down. For the first time, Bennett will be participating in the National Plastic Free Lunch Day this year on November eighth. So I'm sure we will see more coming about that. And lastly, our shared decision-making team, our district team, met today. We reviewed the grant spending for both the ARP and Chrisa grants as we are required to do. We also reviewed some of our building goals. Some of our building teams have not yet created their full goals. So we are going to reconvene at the beginning of December to hear additional details. But really, the, the high school has set really comprehensive goals, so I'll share those. The building level, they're working at a building level on improving attendance and reworking their SEL initiative. And then their departments are really working hard. The math department is looking at their Algebra II course. The science department is working on strengthening student short responses on the Earth Science exam after analyzing student performance data. Social Studies Department is working on increasing proficiency on the Enduring Issues Essay after reviewing student performance data. English Department is setting reading comprehension goals with a focus on our E and L and special education students. The business department is working on increasing financial literacy. The physical education department is working on improving cardiovascular endurance with a focus on running and walking and lifelong fitness activities. The health department is mapping the new health curriculum to the health standards. The language department is looking to increase the number of students achieving the SEAL of Biliteracy by ten percent. The counseling department is looking to increase parental engagement by providing evening presentations and tracking parental attendance. They have noted that virtual presentations have better attendance these days after the pandemic. The music department is looking to improve student theory knowledge, understanding of scales, key signature, time signatures, rhythms, pitch identification, articulations, and musical terminology. And the art department is working on aligning ratings rubrics, rubrics and curriculum and art elements and principles. Sorry, there was a lot.
Wow. Mrs. McLaren, that was a lot.
I'm sorry.
But you know what? Our staff and students are very busy, and you are sharing the, the news about them. So we're happy to sit here and listen to the, all of the wonderful news our students are doing and our staff.
Are there any questions for Superintendent McLaren? Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, that was quite a presentation. Hopefully, you know, we'll get a newsletter out, because not everybody attends these things. If we get ten percent of that in a newsletter, that'd be great.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Thank you. It was very informative. Question for you about, given that the trans-
Question for you about, um, given the, the transitions in the, between the elementary buildings. It seems clear that Mr. Dedonna is accountable for the transition to, for the sixth grade. Who's accountable for the transition from Phoenisha to Bennett?
Principal Bono is going to be handling, leading that transition.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
I just wanted to say I'm very excited about the playground and I think it's such a good idea to have people as involved as possible in picking and I just think that'll add to the excitement.
I think it, it's really fun to have the kids vote on it, but to do the community build is really fun. It's.
I will have to say that, um, I helped build Phoenisha, Woodstock, and Bennett along with Superintendent McLaren. And they actually were the, some of the best weekends there. We did Phoenisha and Woodstock back-to-back weekends. It, it was hard on the back, but it was act, it was a wonderful weekend. So I can't wait to get the community build again for this one too.
So yeah, it's, the community builds are really good and I recommend, uh, you know, get involved. It's a lot of fun. Uh, I got kind of pushed into one and I really had a good time.
Okay, um, 7.01, our student rep. Sophia Datta will give us the report.
Hello, hello everyone. Um, recently in student government, we've made substantial progress on our outdoor classroom project. Our community planting days last week, Friday and Saturday attracted a large crowd of students. Superintendent McLaren, thank you so much for joining us. Um, we had many hands helping transport dirt, dig holes and plant trees. And now student government's kind of looking towards the next step in this process. So right now we're researching furniture to accompany the plants outside. And we look to complete our outdoor classroom in the spring, so stay tuned for that. Um, in addition, we've been continuing our festive lunchtime activities. Our most recent activities during lunch have been limbo. And then last week it was pass the pumpkin, kind of fun. Um, today, like Superintendent McLaren noted, we have a lot of high school sports news. So I'm going to get into some of the specifics. Congratulations to our field hockey team who made it to sections. Today, our boys varsity soccer team had a sections game at Red Hook. The girls varsity soccer team is hosting their first home sections, home sections game in 10 years. And that will be tomorrow at 3:00 PM. Our football team made it to playoffs for the first time in 30 years. And their home game will be this Saturday at 2:00 PM. Our cross-country team also made it to sections and they will also be attending M halls this Thursday. And then lastly, unrelated to sports, our high school newspaper is coming out with its first issue in November. Thank you.
Fantastic. Any questions?
Do we know if the boys won today? The soccer team?
Unfortunately, no. They did not win.
Oh, bummer. Okay, thank you.
Okay, 8.01, the board will report district news. Does anybody? I actually. Hello? Oh, wasn't I? Um, on October 16th, I was the, uh, voting delegate for our Board of Education for the, uh, NISBA annual meeting. That meeting started at 3:30 in the afternoon and the, we lost a quorum at 11:56. We were voting on 56 resolutions. We managed to get through all of those resolutions. And, um, we lost the quorum. Um, and we, we were unable to go over any of the last minute resolutions. But the 56 resolutions were voted upon and I believe NISBA, um, emailed everybody the, the report. So you can check up on how they were. As Sophia just said, that the football team has made, um, playoffs for the first time that Saturday. Um, they are also having a pancake breakfast at the West Hurley Firehouse Saturday, or sorry, Sunday morning from eight to 12. And, uh, I believe it was last Thursday or the Thursday before, trustee Goodrich, myself, Superintendent McLaren and trustee Bishop, uh, we all attended the Ulster County School Boards Association meeting. Um, it was the first one of the year. We do these four or five times a year. Um, and we, this is the, just the general meeting for all of Ulster County School Board members to get together for the first time and introduce and meet your, meet other school board members from Ulster County. So our next meeting, I want to say is in November. And, um, look forward to any other trustees joining us. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, so, um, 9.01, the board will acknowledge the public be heard comments from last meeting, Rick Wolf and Megan Fitzgerald. 10.01, public and student may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from the public, including students, on any non-agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the board cannot engage in discussion or answer questions during public be heard. Please know that we hear you and we take all your comments into consideration. The board does reserve the right to cor, correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during public be heard. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual students or personnel concerns may bring them to the superintendent's attention in private. Our first name is Stephanie Bryant.
Thank you to the board for this opportunity to hear my voice. I do not take it lightly and I do not take it for granted. Thank you to everyone who can't be here tonight and who is watching the live stream or watching the replay because they can't be here tonight. Thank you to all the parents who stopped me at my son's baseball games, who stopped me at my kids' concerts, to thank me for coming out at public be heard. I'm here tonight to remind you of the overwhelming voter turnout at the school board, after the school board election of May 16th in support of the candidates who voted on a platform to keep our rural elementary schools open. I'm here to remind you that we, the voters who came out in those record mandated numbers are still here. We're still organizing, we're still utterly heartbroken and dumbfounded of the previous board's last minute publicly announced decision to vote on the closure of Phoenisha and Woodstock Elementary School for an unfunded plan that has no plan, that requires a voter bond. In what political landscape do you see the voters approving a bond for an unfunded building? For all of the elementary school students? Where will all those existing students go if the bond fails? Why won't you listen to the voices of the community? And the research that shows that young elementary students thrive in their local close-knit rural elementary schools? And will the board find a way to support the will of the people to keep Phoenisha and Woodstock Elementary Schools open? Thank you.
Esther Downton? Thank you. Um, I'm not going to read anything out this time. I usually do that, but I'm shooting from the hip a little bit today. Um, partly because it's been a, been a week already. Um, yeah, I, I guess I just want to say, um, everything that you guys are talking about, um, up here sounds positive and great and all we want is positivity, positivity and greatness in everything that we're doing in designing for our children. But at the moment, there is a big divide in our community. And I think largely that is from, well, it's for the most part due to what Stephanie was just saying. In that there's a big, big divide between people who want to unify this district and those that want to retain and conserve our village schools. And, you know, you've got two groups in this community, Open and Unify on Tierra. And that just, that's not a good thing for this district. We should all be working together. And I think largely, a lot of the dialogue around these things are happening online and it's really contentious and conflict conversations. And I just don't think it needs to be like that. I think we could get together and all build this together if we had more of a public exchange of ideas and, um, and thoughts. And so we can, everyone just can feel a bit more heard. Um, Open is, I'm, I'm involved with Open. I've been the treasurer for Open since it opened as a PAC. It's just parents. It's not a nefarious organization. It's just parents who wanted to be transparent about the money they were spending on campaigns. And we can do that as a PAC. But people were assuming that, that there was a, I don't know. For some reason, someone posted my address on social media the other day. And I just think the people are kind of going to these, um, depths to find, I don't know, some, something in amongst this to, to, I don't know, in some way make out that we are, you know, a, a sort of misinformation machine. We're not with parents who want to conserve our schools. And, you know, we should be careful about posting information on social media. I have two little kids, so I, that's, that's not a good thing. No one here is trying to do anything underhand. We just want the schools open and we want to be listened to. So I think as a board, it would be great if you could organize a public forum. Or we could just all talk in the open and it was less you guys transmitting and us transmitting, but us actually exchanging a conversation. And, you know, and doing it in a respectful way. I have a huge respect for all the work that you're doing. It's not easy. Um, but I would love it if I, as a parent, could be more listened to and involved in some way. And I, I'm engaged and that's great. And all these other parents are engaged and that's great. You know, that's what you want in a school district. So if we can try and create opportunities to be heard, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, we will, we shall continue. Okay, that brings us up to 11.01. Continue to the discussion on parliamentary procedures. Um, and also 11.02, continue the discussion and creation of the 22, 23, 24, uh, board goals. Now, um, seeing that our board president is not here this evening, I would like to table, um, our discussion and possible action for our parliamentary procedures and also our board goals.
I agree.
I will first, can I get a second? Trustee Mitchell Morell? We will, any questions? Okay, so we will now take a vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Romano?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. So we will put those back on a future agenda. All right, so we're going to have a break, but I, can we, I think we can go through with this? Okay. So the next thing, 13.01, approve a sent agenda. The board hereby approves 1302 to 1309. Can I have a first? Trustee Romano, a second. Trustee Goodrich, any comments?
Yeah, so I reviewed the Schedule U and I do approve of that, so thank you.
Okay, trustee Jerome?
Um, aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Romano?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, um, approve all contract, contract and independent contract retainers. The, the board hereby approves, item numbers 1402 to 1407. Can I have a first? Trustee? Uh, trustee Jerome? A second? Trustee Romano? Uh, any comments? Okay, trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Romano?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we are at our committee reports. So ad hoc?
Yes. The main ad hoc and two subcommittees met with their, for their monthly meetings on Monday, October 16th. And I just want to make note that most of this is reiterating Principal Dedonna's report and portions of the superintendent's report. So bear with me. First was the Subcommittee for Bennett Transition. We reviewed the comprehensive communication plan that is in progress with the support of our BOSI's Public Relations Team, along with a webpage dedicated to information sharing around the transitions, as well as the possibility of a dedicated email address for parents and community members to connect directly and share their feedback and ideas. We were informed that at the PTA summit, that members from all PTAs were present, along with our central administrators. They expressed their concern regarding the sixth grade transition, staffing, sport, music, elective and club offerings, and how the district plans to support and facilitate the move to Bennett. We had preliminary talks about how to capture student input for the Bennett Playground Edition and also share updates about the addition and possibly having a community build day for the spring of 2024. The committee spoke of the importance of creating an elementary transition committee team that would consist of administration, faculty and staff. We were given an update that the Health and Wellness Committee is planning a meet, greet and eat event in May 2023 that would be an additional opportunity to connect with the community to share updates and answer questions. At the main ad hoc meeting, we spoke about the update Principal Dedonna gave the Bennett PTA and the understanding that nothing regarding the transition of sixth grade to the middle school has been at a standstill. Since the decision was made, Principal Dedonna, administration and staff have been on, been on the go, establishing timelines and a game plan. It was felt by the administration that Principal Dedonna's time with the PTA attendees was positive and well-received. And there were hopes that his positive momentum and clarity gave everyone peace of mind and the ability to have comfort that as we move closer to next fall, that there is a timeline and a timeline of communication and acclamation in place. Finally, the Subcommittee for Celebrating Phoenisha discussed possible ideas such as a time capsule reveal, creating a Bennett time capsule, a photo shoot at Phoenisha with all Phoenisha alumni invited, and most importantly, meeting with the PTA at the December 4th meeting with the central administration team. And also connecting with the elementary transition team and gathering their input on how to continue to celebrate Phoenisha. All three of these committees are focused on communication and collaboration and will continue to work towards the shared goal of each of these transitions, which is celebrating our students, supporting families and staff, and optimizing our resources for their success. Thank you.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
I'm sorry, trustee Romano, I just couldn't hear, um, what was the reference to May 2023 meeting? In the beginning of your update, I, the acoustics were such, I just didn't hear what you said.
There's nothing about, oh, the meet, eat and greet event in May of twen, sorry, 2024. My apologies, wrong year.
I'm sorry, you probably said 2024.
No, no, I said 2023.
Okay, well, it's funny because I was, that did, that's the part that didn't fluster me. It was what, it was a meet and greet, is what he said.
My bad.
I still didn't get it. I'm sorry. What, what is it that's happening in May of 24?
So we were given an update that the Health and Wellness Committee is planning a meet, eat, greet and eat event in May of 2024 that would be. that would be an additional opportunity to connect with the community to share updates and answer questions. And I'm going to share this with the entire board and I'll send it to be added to the minutes, okay?
Has Audit Committee met? Communications?
We met and talked not only about distilling some of the things we've been talking about over the past couple of months into a newsletter form that eventually will go out digitally, but will also be included in the board corner of our print publication. As well as that, we talked about language. And I think it was pointed out that language like dwindling, decaying, downsizing and declining are depressing. And they make us sound like we're dying. And I suggested that we use an O word, like optimize, optimistic, onwards, obtainable, opportunities, original. Well, so you get the idea. I think it's a way that we have to look at ourselves. I think that, one thing I didn't mention is that we went and visited the middle school and high school and it was such a wonderful experience. Ontario is a great district. I really think that we need to look at ourselves and face the things that are real challenges in our district, to your point. But also to look at ourselves and all the good things that we are. So both of those challenges of evolving as a district are in front of us and hope that the comms committee can talk more about those things with the public.
Okay, Facilities Committee met last week. We met at Bennett. We discussed our the, our plans for our, I believe it's phase three classrooms to be done over this summer. We have put out, we sent, sorry, we sent the plans up to SED. We are waiting for approvals to come back for them. And once we do, we will send that stuff out to bid. We are hoping to have it bid, come back after the holidays and bid out in the spring. Our next facilities meeting will be in December. Did the Legislative Action Committee have a report? Trustee Lynch?
Yes, thank you. Actually wanted to get, just to give you an update on our discussion and then ask for any feedback on legislative action agenda, so to speak. But our recommendation is that we singularly focus this year on the EV bus issue. We've mapped out policymakers, both at the county, state and federal level, who we think could be allies in supporting not only our own plans for procuring and building out the infrastructure, but also obviously it's aligned with the NISBA recommendations statewide. And we'd like to dedicate our time to helping the administration and the district stakeholders involved in this issue look at all of the compounding issues and be a voice for supporting them in this huge transition. So wanted to get feedback on that. And we will have our next meeting, I believe it's the fourth, the first Wednesday of November. So if there are ideas or further feedback on that, please let us know. But we've started to map out the legislators involved and feel that there's more than enough to do on just this one issue alone.
Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know what, you know, if we had a list of the issues that you're bringing forward. I mean, the big one for me is the requirement to eliminate all, to have to go a hundred percent to EV buses. Because we need some of the, some of the other buses to go long distances. You know, Washington DC for the Rocket Club and, you know, there's other issues here.
I will just say that this is something that we actually discussed at Ulster County School Boards, that they also have a legislative action committee that they are also taking this up on. So I could, if you, if our Legislative Action Committee is interested in joining with the Ulster County Legislative Action Committee, the two committees could collaborate and work together with. And if you're interested in that information, I can, I will forward that information to you. So. Policy Committee?
Sure, happy to give the report. Just to say, the work continues for us to update our policy manual. And we've been working with NISBA, the New York State School Board Association, and their team to help provide guidance on what needs to be updated from a regulatory perspective. And then also just guidance on, you know, updating language more generally. So we're taking policy, taking each policy individually and you'll see that reflected in each agenda with updated language. So I think we took about five forward in the meeting just this week, reviewing them and discussing them with our own lawyers in some cases, just to ensure that the NISBA language was applicable to our district.
I just wanted to add, it was pointed out after our last board meeting that one of the policies that we adopted did not contain gender neutral language. So very rightly so, that was pointed out. So our district clerk has gone through the policy manual again to try and ensure that our policies contained gender neutral language. That had been done a long time ago by our previous district clerk. But as we have adopted new policies, we have not always been deliberate about that and we need to be. So we have corrected that and we will be more in tune moving forward.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Okay, the board will discuss old business. Any old business? Okay, the board will discuss new business. Any, trustee Goodrich?
So I just want to comment, very concerned here on one of the previous speakers. Maybe we need a new policy or statement for the public beheard. Because the sharing of addresses for public beheard members should not be condoned in any way. And we need to try to prevent that. That's uncalled for. It's very concerning. The sharing of addresses for somebody that comes up and is in part of the public beheard. Yeah, I understand it wasn't us, but we can't, we got to try to, you know, prevent the public from doing that.
Any other new business? I do have a little portion of new business that, we've, over the years, this has come up. And something that, about students when they graduate, we're talking about our three through eight assessments and data points. And something that was brought up to me is that some students, when they graduate here, you have to take placement exams to colleges. And sometimes you may not always place into the 100 classes. Sometimes you go below. And I would like us as a school board to find out some way, how to find out if our kids, when they graduate, are scoring into, you know, college level courses or if they are scoring in the oh ninety-eight, oh ninety-nine courses. Because to me, that's one of those data points that we can say, we're trying to prepare our students for whether it's educate, whether they're going to college or they're going to the workforce. You know, if kids aren't going, if kids can't get into college level courses, then there could be some things that we could do better on. So I'm wondering if we could, and a lot of this has to be self-reported back from like our seniors who would be graduating in June, could email back to the school. And that's something that I'm wondering if we could maybe work with student government and see, you know, see if the seniors this year will, you know, start getting, being interested in emailing their, if we, I'd set up an email or something to say, okay, yes, I, you know, when I took my college placement exams, I got into college level. Or I didn't. Just this way, we could have a gauge of it to know where we are. Because again, when it comes to seniors, you know, you don't take any regences. You don't take any tests that are going to this. So this is just something that if we could figure out a way to get more data and that's how we are going to make decisions where we're going.
Sorry, are you asking for SAT scores?
No, not SATs. I'm just wondering, when a kid, when you go into college, you have to take a placement exam. And I just would like to know how our students, how our graduating students are doing on those placement exams. I think I said it-
Within, in each individual college, if they're going to, thank you.
Yeah, and just, you know, and this is just the big picture of us. Because again, it's, a lot of the stuff is, the students have to self-report back and they're not students anymore of our district. So that's where, you know, I'm thinking maybe if we could, if we could partner with student government, that may be, you know, an avenue that we could, they would maybe with reporting back, so. The board members will request more information. Any RFIs for Superintendent McLaren? Nope. Okay, motion to adjourn the meeting. Trustee Romano, I need a second. Trustee Jerome? All in favor? That's unanimous. We will see you at Woodstock on November fourteenth.